I'm moving on to motion twenty one B, City of Sanctuary. And that's proposed by Councilor Jafari Abubakar. And can we have a second? Thank you, Councilor. Do you have a closing speech?
Lord Mayor, councilors and citizens, as some of you know, my father is a refugee. He moved here from Technaun in August thirteen. It is therefore a great honour to propose this motion to the council that has made strides in this area with the scenario of settlement scheme and withdrawal of work without any previous partners. I particularly want to thank Councilor Tipple and our officers for their work. We have a city with tireless campaigners, civil society groups and charities working together with a simple message: You are not alone. I am hugely proud of groups such as the Syrian Sisters of African Families in the UK, run by those who have lived experiences to allow a safe space for one who will at home. Despite all this, there are huge challenges to overcome, to ensure our friends, our neighbours, have access to rights and services, to tackle isolation and to work towards ensuring that we are not part of the government's racist hostile environment in any of our work. You might ask, why now? I worked in Australia in twenty fourteen and coming back to the UK, pregnant and vulnerable, I felt frightened by the openly racist transatlantic lines. Here in the UK, at times, a more gentle version of that same rhetoric has been used to blame immigrants, hostility and dissection of our public services with horrendous effects on our diverse working class in particular. I remember the Citizens of Nowhere comment. I had news to reason make in her last few hours as a Prime Minister, a Muslim and Iranian Brit and a proud citizen of Oxford. When I lived in Iran, there were many discussions at the seemingly never-ending Mecca meetings that have occurred on the topics of democracy, equality and social justice. When talking about the great democracies, my dad used to say in English, it's not about the individuals, it's about the system. The Brexit rhetoric, as painful as it is to so many of us who experienced similar long before Brexit was even a word, is so much less powerful without the legitimacy given to it by our social and political structures. The fear of the other has long been used by the powerful and by our democratic systems, be it the Commonwealth Immigration Act of nineteen sixty-two or the counter-terrorism strategy introduced in two thousand and three, which embedded the prevent programme and the racist suspicions into the safeguarding function of our public services. I am proud to see Councilor Smith starting this process of changing our systems to make sure that fear of deportation doesn't influence the institution. I have seen firsthand, as a doctor and as a resident councilor of House, not only how ineffective this is, but also how fundamentally transforms and roams the precious nature of our public services and our NHS. Please support this motion.
Councilor Warden, Councilor Gardiner, would you speak on this? Councilor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. A Prime Minister who is about to step down from her role instead. A number of years going to work every morning, trying to work out how to make life more miserable and dangerous for the most vulnerable people on the planet. That is the hostile environment working party and it's really important that Oxford sets up it's like the diametric opposite to the hostile environment. And that's, to me, what City of Sanctuary means, the very opposite of a hostile environment. So enough as people said, you could tell, I'm perhaps just putting people to sing for the cream of the bear of Sheffield now in the Magin, addressing the European Parliament on this donation issue, as you call now Matthew of Salini for his cowardice. An example of where you're bringing that, he might be standing, of course.
So have Councilor Gardiner, Councilor Tipple and Councilor Warden on this. Councilor Gardiner.
I too am proud to support this motion to declare Oxford the City of Sanctuary. Oxford has a long and very proud history and diversity of both people and ideas. It is important that we all stand in solidarity and welcome everyone, whether born here or elsewhere. The other is harmful and damaging. No one chooses the land that they were born into. No child choose to be a victim of poverty, hate or war. Britain, once rather poor, now has a member of the Kinder Transport Group. This arrangement provides them a long and proud tradition of caring for child refugees. We should maintain that. People don't like it when come refugees, so it's right and just that we hold those who have taken refuge with us to empower and enable them rather than to take them to death. This motion therefore seeks to counter the growth in xenophobia and nationalism and to becoming more prevalent since the time of the pandemic. You should have the full support of this council.
We have another five speakers, I think I'll draw a line on to that. Councilor Tipple.
I'd like to start by thanking our speakers and Councilor Jafari Abubakar for her eloquent and eloquent speeches earlier today. The hostile environment created by the Conservative government's discriminatory policies make it imperative, as we do in this motion, to restate our commitment to Oxford being the City of Sanctuary to migrants, refugees and asylum seekers. In these times where the brutal impact of the government's regime is being laid bare, the migrant communities in our city must know that our arms are open and welcome to them and that we celebrate the vibrancy, skills and talents they bring to our city and communities. We became City of Sanctuary in twenty fifteen and as Cabinet Member for Supporting Communities, I wanted to say something for the proud and proactive record we have put in place since then. Oxford City Council has accommodated one hundred and thirty-six people under our VTRF scheme, more than any local authority in the South East. This equates to thirty families, thirteen members of whom are now in full or part-time employment, eighteen of whom are in volunteer roles and fifty-three, including children, are in English language or full-time education. We've worked closely in partnership with organisations and agencies across the city and counted to share best practice and communication across Oxfordshire. This has led to improvements in raising safeguard concerns, establishing employment and SL pathways and raising awareness of the EU Resident Post Brexit and EU Settlement Support Scheme hosted by Asylum Welcome. We also commissioned a number of services to support refugee families on new settlement programmes, including Asylum Welcome and Refugee Resource. Our dedication to this work has also led us to secure one million pounds in additional funding from governments to do a number of important projects, including providing extra resources to investigate and take action against Rome landlords who let out unsafe and illegal properties and are currently developing a school advocacy project to help migrant parents be more involved and have better understanding of the UK's school system. This record shows that we take our status as the City of Sanctuary seriously and our council of actions are not words. Nevertheless, there is always more work to be done and this motion sets out a powerful roadmap to ensure our dedication to supporting the rights of asylum seekers, refugees and migrants and enabling them to access the services they need and opportunities they deserve across our city continues in the way so elegantly described earlier by Adam and Naveen. I urge you to support this motion. Thank you.
Councilor Warden.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think it's just a hard moment as well, because it's across parts of Oxford. Also, I'm not a refugee, but I was lucky to get to come to this country at the time where I felt that the world was being welcomed. And when I got here, actually, I felt that people actually appreciated me and valued me for whatever I did, because I was contributing to humanity. But it's just so sad that recently, for whatever reason that people have, you kind of have a hostile society, a hostile community. And that pain, it did it. And even at this particular point where I should be celebrating with joy that my daughters have given birth to twins, I'm fearful. I'm fearful what happens for them in the future ahead of that. I'm very scared because what I had before was actually confidence and comfort in the time that I had come to. What I have now is fear of what the future might bring and what the future might be for my children and grandchildren. And that's why I'm so pleased that people in this chamber are in full support of making our progress and this is the time. But I think it's actually gone much further because I think the work we need to do is not just in our own community. I think it's become a national and global problem. They have someone like Barack Obama with his rhetoric and racist remarks being condemned by some people because of our own government here could not find a way to say what is acceptable. I think when we have this kind of climate and this kind of environment, we should be fearful, which is where within our own lands we should try and do whatever it is we can to push this idea of hatred and bigotry as far away as we can. Because if we don't do it now, it's our children and our grandchildren that will suffer. So everyone who's made here today, this is very thing like that. We're not just doing it for us now, we're doing for those coming behind us and doing for the future. Thank you.
It's important that we do rethink these policies because the world is speeding up and the world is also pragmatic. We've got huge demographic, technological climate and other changes happening. We should go to make the refugee crisis even greater. We have a norms and rules-based international system that's failing. And so it's important that there are cities like Oxford which stand out as a state. I think we also need to become more radical. It's not just that we have these policies, it's that we also think that those who have these outcomes who are separated from their families, we should be asking the government for future motions to help bring families together. The new Home Secretary could, the stroke of a pen, repeal and end the restrictive rules that keep refugees in the UK apart from people they love. And there are three things that could happen which will stop that. The first is to allow child refugees in the UK the right to sponsor their close family so they can rebuild their lives and help them integrate to the new community. The second is to expand who qualifies as a family so that young people, young refugees, who have turned eighteen and elderly parents can join their families in the UK. And we should reintroduce legal aid across the board but for refugee family reunion cases. Because we know that when you strip away legal aid, you cause those with the least amount of knowledge to suffer the greatest. And refugees already suffer pretty damn badly. So we've seen progress, we've seen no progress rather than what we've met who was Home Secretary, had restrictive immigration policies. We're going to see even less progress on the voice of the people who was former Secretary simply did not understand the issue. Families belong together. The government must help their families back together. It must listen to our voice and it must treat refugees like the human beings that they are.
I'm going to discuss this motion, working in the field of supportive therapy. I'm worried about the traumatic impact and the detrimental effect on the lives of our kids, being a refugee or migrant. So support our refugees and support this motion.
How about that will be brief? So Councilor Turner.
Excellent. There are three concrete reasons I wanted to say on this. One is typically around some meaningful activities we do. When I, as well, a decade ago, and I was a new member in relation to H O licensing, we did fierce here, we didn't want any immigration Oxford residents with these properties that we were doing. And that's been a policy which has been, I think, that interrupted existence for the best part of a decade. There are other councils, it's sort of shared, based on this specifically, a few of them, I feel strongly it's the right one. Because particularly where people's immigration status is uncertain, they're really vulnerable to exploitation. And our jobs, council, be protecting people from exploitation. So when you're in the struggle to persuade people that they need to be able to enforce their rights, they need to inform the council when a landlord is not meeting his or her obligations. And the idea that the council is in some way in the North Arm and Home Office would be very, very distressing. And I think we undermine all the work that we would do. Just as an aside as well, I'm extremely concerned about the rights of immigrants and I hope they come to an end very soon as well. Secondly, again, this is hardly a decade ago, I was in the MP's office at the time, this was in the S, it's obviously got worse since. And the MP's immigration inquiry line is one of the few ways you could actually help at other times when we uncovered people's stories, papers of conquest saying things that would be unfair to treatment. That's having a really awful impact and that clearly is the case in states now. Again, if there's any sense of approaching the Member of Parliament, you'll have, you'll in some way undermine your position rather than get the support and the justice that you need. That's a very, very dangerous situation. And so that brings on the third thing, which is I hope that we will be able to do quite a lot of policy firsthand and also work with growing groups who will speak with people whose status may be uncertain and see if we can really get where our efforts inevitably, that sort of mistrust, that concern about what might happen. If we speak with the people, institutions or authorities will still be there. And I hope that we actually will be able to shift perception of this council and this city so that we are a safe place to come and pull support. So that's what we will do.
The hostile environment still exists. Two of our guests were the freedom of the city event. We held up for seven hours in immigration from the beginning and only conservative effort by a number of people got them through at all. So would you like to settle?
Thank you, councillors, and thank you particularly Councilor Turner for those words of confidence action. So I talked about feeling fearful, but now hearing those wonderful congresswomen standing up to Trump's rhetoric, I feel rejuvenated, knowing that if there is no struggle, there is no progress. We desperately need a new story and a new vision. We must unite and return to the basic values of justice, human rights and dignity for all. We each matter by the virtue of our shared humanity. As ill-armed democracies, we must see other struggles as our own and their success as our success so we can speak to our common humanity. Thank you.
We're ready to debate on this and we have motion twenty one B now for vote. City Sanctuary, that's in place, please put your hands. Thank you very much. We're very proud of the answer that's moving swiftly on.
Syrian community in Oxford by the Refugee Study Centre, that our willing response from practice went to us that they felt safe and welcome and happy to be here. I welcome the initiatives in the motion before you today, especially the practical help offering to refugees. But resettlement in a new country is a long progress for refugees and there are always difficulties along the way. Finding a new place in a new country when you don't speak their language, regretting your life when you don't have work and hurting your child, children, plan for their future when you don't have full understanding of your new environment are all challenging. I would like to talk about one of these difficulties and one of the things that helps. Learning a new language and others is not easy. As some of you may know, learning a new language with a new script when you may or may not have been able to read and writing in your own language is considerably hard. In two thousand and seventeen, the government located ten million to support a refugee arriving under vulnerable person resettlement scheme and issued guidelines that it should in a part be used to ensure that all refugees receive a minimum of eight hours in English language and teaching their reading starting within a month of arrival. While most of the Syrian arriving in Oxford are attending English class, mainly in MBS in Cali or the City of Oxford College, I know of none who are receiving eight hours a week. Most get four hours a week. Those Syrian children and babies get none. Nowhere offers language learning and childcare. A recent report by Refugee Action has highlighted the shortfall in language provision for refugees and migrants. Presently, I feel the effect of this in our community. Without enough English, our daily lives are difficult. We may be able to negotiate better with the bus system after a bit of practice, but when a letter arrives from the council or when we receive an email from the tax office, we are start looking for work in it is obviously difficult. And lack of language is the best barrier to getting employment for most of our community. Worse still, when we need medical help, have to go for hospital treatment or need to call an ambulance, we are really in trouble. One lady in our community gets worse alone in her telephone because she was unable to call an ambulance when she went into study in leather last year. The consequences of not receiving enough English language lessons are really serious. And I would add to the council to prioritize this in making Oxford a real city of sanctuary.
Sorry, we've got a few seconds left.
Yeah, so I want to help organisations, a lot of organisations that are here in Syrian community for daily life, for council and school and abroad. But without this service, we would really be struggling with the practicing of resettlement. But rebuilding our lives is also involved rebuilding our relationships and building a new friendship and making new connections. And here it is, our community that we depend on most. My group is a Syrian sister, enable women in our community to make issues. And we share our difficulties and struggles and we share advice and tactics. And we provide each other emotional support in throwing what sometimes is past time.
Yeah, sorry, we've run out of time now.
Okay, so we do very much.
That's okay. Well, thank you very much. Strict on time, we have so many people watching. Another response from Councilor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you very much for your address. We have all read as well, so don't worry. You have read all of your words, so anything that you wouldn't make me say today. Can I commend you on your edition, which is fantastic. But I can propose some very serious issues which we will of course take away another look at. I've probably, as I said, just reminded me that it's bombing our children's centres at Oxford City, there was trust provided to allow them to have English language classes. And it's one of the short-sighted aspects of government policy that they will give value in one hand, which is short-term and is not actually able to be used properly because they don't actually think that how it can be used. And they don't allow the services to actually develop services properly for people. But we will take all the best way. I said earlier in the council meeting that I was making Councilor Jafari Abubakar migrant champion so that she can work with officers to continue the good work of the city and support migrants of all different kinds in the city to settle in and feel welcome and to learn and be part of our community and as the vibrancy of our city. I know that I'm conscious of time, so people may smack me down in a minute. And so I will leave the question to talk a bit more. And I know she will read the motions that we're going to discuss later about why she should be particularly recognized as a candidate.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Adouh Khan. I'm from Afghanistan. I came to Oxford in two thousand and seven at the age of twelve as an asylum seeker. I was passed over to Oxford to share social services and food them during foster family. The kind of support I got from social services, they had called me up to school, giving me all the support I needed. They used to come every three to six months to check on me, how I was progressing and helping with anything that was needed. I was also supported by the organisation Chuda Society, which has shut down now. They helped me with my education. They were always there for me whenever I needed them. And they used to hold social activities every week to bring everyone together. I had the privilege that I was given by such a wonderful foster family where they supported me with everything, helping grow as a person, looked after me and pushed me to achieve my best in life. After a lot of struggle, I was given a few defences and now I'm on my way to getting British citizenship. I work in London and I feel settled in this country like I belong. This would have not been possible if it wasn't for the support I got from Oxford. As we can see nowadays, some youngsters don't have the support they need. They struggle to find drug clubs and other groups to keep them engaged and they end up taking the wrong path, getting involved in drugs and other crimes. They might also suffer from mental distress because being in the asylum system without any support can be a very difficult experience. And I think it's very important to have a mentor and that mentor could be a foster family, a teacher, a drug worker, anyone that can guide you to the right path, support you and push you to achieve what you like. I'm sure you all see the benefit of making Oxford a welcoming city for asylum seekers and refugees. And I hope that we can work with others to make this happen. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Naveen Athalib. So my family started fostering when I was in Iran. And Adam was the first child that came to our house and absolutely transformed our lives. Of course, we didn't know this was going to happen when we first started out. I got the opportunity to learn whilst growing up with Adam about the struggles of navigating the asylum system as a child, going through adolescence whilst being in limbo and not being able to be excited about your future as other non-people were because your status in this country had not been approved yet. He grew resilient and I've always admired his ability to be positive through the toughest of times. Interacting with social workers, refugee support workers, education professionals, all through Adam gave me a unique outlook into the world of an unaccompanied asylum seeking child. It made me more curious about refugee rights and ultimately led me to study social work, qualify and now teach at Oxford Brookes University as a lecturer in the social work. The work that many organisations in Oxford, like Asylum Malcolm, Refugee Resource, Oxfordshire County Council, do never fails to amaze me when I compare our small but mighty city with others across the country. I've done work and research within immigration detention and the area of work for the people who have no recourse to public funds. I've seen the immense amount of struggle and distress that people face in a system that fails to provide for them on the basis of their immigration status. As a country that uphold values of social justice, equality and inclusivity, yet we continue to detain people indefinitely. We have welcomed the shutting down of Councilor's House and I hope that we continue to push for the end of the indefinite detention altogether. Oxford committing to becoming a city of sanctuary for asylum seekers and refugees shows our commitment to upholding human rights and social justice for all. Adam being welcomed into Oxford not only had an impact on his life but also inspired my own life trajectory and would in turn have an effect on the lives of people I teach and work with. So we are therefore a good example of how the single act of receiving the support of the city can create the ripples of transforming entire communities for the detriment.
Thank you. Very simply, thank you for your very inspiring and transformative story. And I think everyone here will have learned from you today and that's actually, I think, the message that you hope to bring to us. So ladies and gentlemen, we are reaching our motions, which, several actually, I think, which are relevant to you. I hope you may say this is about debates. If you may further the answer, I go to the previous person coming in about the fact that we have today a creative mind with champion in our council and you were important in the work that you described very cleverly in your speeches. you described, very eloquent speeches, so thank you both very much, thank you both for the huge contribution you already made to our city, and thank you for taking the responsibility to talk to say goodbye.
We have seen an increase in racism in this very city, and this is the context in which this speaker has chosen to come here and make allegations against an older Muslim woman who alleges she's a victim of racism and who is not here to defend herself.
Here, here.
It's against this background that the speaker has chosen to come here and make allegations against me, a visible Muslim woman, a national equality anti-racism campaigner, and an elected councillor, because I refuse to not choose on the narrative of those who say they're victims of racism and they're looking to address racism and all forms of bigotry. The speaker has chosen to deliberately conflict a number of issues to try and derail the vital work that is needed to eradicate racism and to bring people in communities together. His address here is a distraction from the work that needs to be done. I will finish up by inviting the speaker to work with me and indeed all members of this council on implementing proactive anti-racism work in Oxford. We would love to have you job on our, we hope you will. I will also finish up by reading the words of African American writer Toni Morrison, who eloquently describes the actual function of racism. She says, "The function, the very serious function of racism is disfranchising. It keeps you from doing your work, it keeps you explaining over and over again your reasons for giving. Somebody says you have no language, as if you've spent twenty years providing, proving to them that you do. Somebody says your head isn't shaped properly, so you have scientists working on the fact that it is. Someone says you have no art, so you dredge that up. Somebody says that you have no kingdom, as if you dredge that up. None of that is necessary, there will always be one more thing." I would also just like to say thank you to the speakers who've spoken today, and they are the true face of Oxford, and it's wonderful to see the representation in this chamber, and one more time, I call on the speaker to work collectively, everyone in this chamber, to ensure that we eradicate racism in Oxford. This council supports the calls of Oxford City Community to hold a transitional military council to account over the killings and abuses of protesters. I'd also like to thank the members of our city community for joining us here this evening, and I know how painful this is for you, and how fearful you are, your family members, so thank you for being here. Since the fall of Muammar al-Bashir on the eleventh of April two thousand and nineteen, Sudan's transition to democratic civilian authority rule has been violently quashed and met by human rights violations carried out by the military authorities compromising on the transitional military council. Rights violations include using rape and sexual abuse as a political weapon, enforced disappearances and imprisonment of protesters, use of live ammunition and torture against unarmed protesters, and attacks on hospitals and health facilities to further target agents. Since December two thousand and eighteen, a mass peaceful protest uniting citizens across class and racial lines over the cost of living has developed into a representative protest movement calling for peaceful democratic change, supported by Sudan's independent trade unions, professional associations and opposition political parties. Doctors, teachers, lawyers, journalists, students and workers are among people who have taken strike action and joined those democrats in Britain. Many of these individuals are related to or are friends of Oxford's residents, of Sudanese heritage, or Sudanese people who are originally from Oxford. Oxford knowledge of the brave and principled work of Oxford's Sudanese community, a wider esprit to push for accountability of the many death days of human rights violations implies the presence of Sudanese people by the way. This council believes the people of Sudan have the right to protest and organize without fear of violence and abuse. This council condemns the British government for being complicit in the violence to its cooperation with the Saudi campaign agenda, where Sudanese militias are deployed and refunding Sudanese militias indirectly with EU border policy, the cartoon protest brand declaration two thousand and fifteen. This council acknowledges thanks to Ipsy Dodds and the R A M R A M P for demanding the UK government applies pressure on the Sudanese authorities to end the killings and abuses and ensure there is a democratic transition of power. In support of the local Sudanese community, this council asks the leader of the council to write to the relevant UK government ministers in the Home Office and Foreign Office and to city MPs, asking that the UK government is in debt for the use of violence, rape and sexual violence against protesters, cease all forms of security cooperation with TNC. So all the other recommendations I listed here are out of time, but I'd like to once again thank members of the Oxford Sudanese community for their brave work and helping me here this evening as well.
Thank you very much for that, I'm looking for a second from the members and Catherine Brown.
Yes, I look to second this motion, I endorse everything that councillor Aziz has said in the, the nature of this massacre has not been fully appreciated in the media reporting here, over a hundred people murdered, something in the region of seventy raped, many bodies thrown into the Nile, quite a number of those murdered, shot or stabbed in hospital, and among the bodies brought out of the Nile, there's a number of recent soldiers in the midst of concern who tried to protect the civilians and were themselves murdered. It is an aspect of a terrible problem in the world, that if one of us murders someone, we're a murderer, we're a very wicked criminal, if we murder two people, we're an exceptionally wicked criminal, but someone who orders troops to shoot down hundreds of people is very often then ahead of state troops with respect and deference. Most of us will remember the Tiananmen Square massacre in Beijing, of course, Megastan and Myanmar are also places where the government bases its power on a massacre of this kind. This is something which everyone who cares about freedom and decency in the world must unite to oppose, so I urge us all to pass this motion. What Oxford does is listened to in the world, we are not simply any local authority, and if the motion does pass, I would ask the administration to seriously consider sending its comments to the cities around the world in which we are true. Thank you very much.
I just very much like from the chair to offer support to Greens, and thank you very much, Shasta, for putting this motion to council, and I thank the fact that it's got cross party support shows the seriousness with which we take it.
I'd like to thank you all in the chamber for their support behind this motion, and in particular councillor Sees bringing it to us today. I've been very touched by the story by Peralat for this amazing community in Oxford, and you just can't imagine what it's like for people living here and hearing these terrible stories about friends and relatives back home in Sudan, I can only imagine, but anything we can do as a city to support people in that situation, I think we should be doing, and that involves working with all those that we possibly can do, our MPs, our governments and other governments through the offices, working with our twin cities, I think all of that, that is important work that we can do to try and help people who are citizens in our city, that are experiencing a ton of tremendous trouble, and who are also of course supporting those who are fighting for democracy in Sudan.
Let the speaker talk before councillors is on.
Thank you, Lord Matt, and thank you councillors, thank you councillor Shasta for presenting this motion. I also had the opportunity to speak at the local peaceful protest and stand in solidarity against the current injustices such as the sexual rape, the open firing, violence, looting properties in their villages against injustices. I fully support this motion, and I hope all our honourable councillors do too. Thank you.
I just echo everything else you said, and also thank councillor Harris, I hope this motion will pass with everyone's backing, and once again this evening, we'll remind you that the local, the regional and the international court commence, our world is very small, due to the care to every person, not just people in the vicinity of the city we live in, but everywhere else, and I think this motion is about showing unity and bringing people together as well, and I'd also just like to end by once again thanking in particular Adelisa Dodds for her exceptional work which she's been doing on this issue, and also Lady Ryan, who are leading the way on this, and their work and their vocal support has really given a lot of confidence to the community, and people have asked me to share that as well, so thank you very much.
We're now moving to a vote, motion twenty-one A, and then we'll see the motion on Sudan, for those who favour the picture.